Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, October 21st, 2020 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. You can watch our meeting this morning live on KPTS Channel 8, on Sedgwick County's social media platforms, on our Facebook and Twitter, or, excuse me, Facebook and YouTube, and then you can also stream us live on our website, sedgwickcounty.org. Commissioners, once again, still have our Plexiglas barriers between them. We are socially distancing in this room, and Commissioner Howell is joining us via Zoom this morning. A recap of yesterday's staff meeting. Commissioners began the discussion of the 2021 Legislative Platform. Our Communications Director, Akeem Ashford, and our General Counsel, Mike Papoun, are leading that discussion. You can watch the full meeting on our YouTube channel, on Facebook Live, or on our website. A reminder, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. this Saturday, October 24th, residents may dispose of their household hazardous waste items at NCAT, the NCAT facility on North Webb, 4,004 North Webb. You can learn more about this free program by visiting us on our website, sedgwickcounty.org, or you can follow us on social media. We do have the event on our social media pages. We also still have bulky waste coupons available for residents to take advantage of. This allows residents to dispose of up to 1,000 pounds of bulky waste at the transfer station, and you can receive your coupon by filling out the form online, sedgwickcounty.org as well. Finally, Commissioners, early voting began this week, so remember that we do have our mega site at Interest Bank Arena for early voting. People are encouraged, voters are encouraged to go there to cast their ballot early if they choose to vote in person. As a reminder, if you do choose to vote in person, we'd like to remind you that advocating for or against any candidate or ballot initiative on the November ballot is not allowed. So this includes wearing or displaying any type of merchandise for any campaign, and additionally, any and all signs related to the campaigns and candidates must be at least 250 feet away from any polling location entrance. We want to make sure that everyone is able to cast their ballot in a safe and secure and healthy environment. On the agenda this week, we have a Red Ribbon Week proclamation, a resignation, and several appointments to various advisory boards. Commissioners will consider a zone change in District 4. There's an item related to industrial revenue bonds, another item related for general obligation bonds, and then we have our discussion of the CARES Act. So with that, Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Okay. Thank you, Kate, for the background. Welcome. I will welcome everybody that's watching on TV, as well as YouTube and Facebook. I'll call the meeting to order for Wednesday, October 21st, for the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. And again, to remind, Commissioner Howell is joining us by remote, and so welcome again this morning.
Good morning, Howard.
Okay, anyway, called the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, Madam, please.
Invitation: To be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meisner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you received a copy of the emails that were sent to us by the deadline last night. We can make a motion that we receive and file, or does anybody have any one of those?
Second.
There's a motion and second to receive and file the public comments that we received as of yesterday evening. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meisner.
Aye. Okay, so we received those. Now, we do have, we have seven people that have signed up to address us this morning, so we'll go with the first one is Mr. William Stout, please. Morning, Mr. Stout.
Good morning.
You have five minutes to address the commission.
Give me just one second here. Sorry, I've got a whole bunch of stuff, so you'll have to give me just one moment.
Okay. And, Mr. Stout, I, our sympathy that I believe you lost, did you lose your father?
I did indeed. In fact, that's part of what I'm here to talk about.
Okay, so my sympathies.
Thank you.
To you and the family.
So as you already know, my name is Bill Stout. I'm a lifetime resident of the city of Wichita, alumnus of North High School, as well as Wichita State University. And as you can probably guess by Chairman's comments, I'm standing here broken today. My father, Bobby Stout, passed away in the wee morning hours this past Friday, and as most of you may be aware, he served for 23 years with the Wichita Police Department, retired in 1980 as a deputy chief. Spent the following 30 years with the Wichita Crime Commission as the executive director, and he also spent 15 years on the Sedgwick County Civil Service Board. In fact, here is a letter from 2015, signed by none other than Mr. Howell, recognizing that fact. I tell you this, not because I'm looking for your sympathy, but quite frankly, because I'm disappointed in you. Many of you remember, my father is the voice of Crime Stoppers. Some of you may remember the song by the Jerry Hon Brotherhood, Captain Bobby Stout. My father loved this city, and he came here in 1956, after the Korean conflict, having been stationed with the Navy in Hutchinson. Took a job with the police department and made a, made a life for himself because he was dedicated to law enforcement in our community. And when he retired in 2010, from his second profession in that, in that service at the Wichita Crime Commission, both the city council and the county commission proclaimed Bobby Stout Week, which is what this proclamation is. The reason I'm disappointed is this. Quite frankly, you killed my father. You killed his will to live with the continued mask mandates. Back in May, he became sick, and before you ask, no, he did not have COVID. He was hospitalized and eventually went into a rehab facility, just in time for the facility to become so upset about the publicity and the political nature of the mandates that they took away all family visitation. My father spent his 88th birthday in a room not much bigger than the area where one of those chairs would sit, alone, unable to see his family or friends because of a mask, because of a virus. No one doubts the virus is real. I had it. I survived it. Mr. Howell had it. He survived it. But apparently, we don't care about survival. We care about politics. You broke his spirit, and he lost his will to live. He and I talked about this not two weeks ago. He told me how disgusted he was with all of you, that you wouldn't even vote on the mandates, but instead, with the exception of Mr. Howell, just continued to let Gerald Minns make all your decisions for you. I don't remember voting for Gerald Minns. I don't know anybody who does, because we didn't. We voted for all of you to do the job that you refused to do. Your mask orders make people angry. They've created shaming and hatred in the community. They've caused unemployment. You know what's happened. They've also increased domestic violence and suicide, and they've killed people because they've broken their will to live. Mr. Dennis, I feel compelled to tell you, as my representative, my father's representative, my dad told me, four days before he died, that he was getting ready to fill out his ballot, and for the first time in his adult life, he was voting Democrat, because he had absolutely no faith in your ability to listen to your constituents, nor do I. You have the ability and the responsibility to listen to the people. You've chosen to do otherwise. If you continue to do otherwise, we have the responsibility and the ability to remove and replace you, and I assure you, it can and will happen. I'd like to end with a plaque that I keep on my desk, that I've had since I worked for the Sheriff's Department. It's entitled, "The Policeman's Prayer," and I know I'm running out of time. This will take about 30 seconds. Lord God be my protection. As I protect others, my strength is I enforce the law, my guide is I lead all to justice, and my source of good is I work against evil. I pray that each one of you heed those words. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell has a question.
Bill, I just, as someone who recently lost his father as well, just wanted to extend my sympathies.
Thank you, Michael. And I, you know, I knew your dad well, and really liked your father.
Yes, well, the, I think the whole community is mourning. For sure, the law enforcement community is in mourning. Your dad had a remarkable life and career.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, I don't see any other comments. Mr. Stout, thank you. Next person is Jeanine Shantz. Good morning, Mrs. Shantz. Welcome to the commission meeting. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Thank you. My name is Jeanine Shantz. Although I live in a neighboring community, I work, eat out, and shop in Sedgwick County sometimes. We attend church with a mask-free congregation in another county. Commissioner Howell, good to see you feeling better. Wish you were here.
Thank you.
Today, my remarks are for those who continue to vote for the mask mandates, and I'm going to start with the Declaration of Independence. I read this to my children every year on the Fourth of July. When in the course of human events, when things happen, the second paragraph you're going to be very familiar with, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We cannot have the pursuit of happiness without liberty. Governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. And whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles, and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall be most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes. And accordingly, all experience has shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable. These evils are no longer sufferable. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations, when that happens, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security." It goes on, "To prove, let the facts be submitted to a candid world." What are the usurpations today? It's government overreach. 15 days to flatten the curve, lockdown. 30 days to slow the spread, more lockdown. Social distancing, only essential businesses open, only curtside service, only during certain hours, only gatherings of 15 people, no nursing home visits, no accompanying family members to the hospital. That happened to me. Only with masks, prescribing medical intervention for the masses. That is unconscionable. Till the cases are reduced, till the cases are reduced more, till, till what? Till a vaccine, Dr. Minns, a non-elected, non, not accountable to the public doctor, has stated. That is absolutely egregious. These are egregious usurpations. It is shameful and unconscionable. The commission can vote today and change this, but they probably won't. Public will vote on November 2nd, and when the people here have a, have the right to alter their government, this commission, they can and they should. District Number 3, write-in candidate Sonia, Tonya Hudson, the only candidate who supports immediately and fully reopening the county without restriction and ending the mask mandate. Spell her name correctly, Tonya Hudson, to make your vote, make your vote count. Forcing medical intervention on citizens is a violation of fundamental human rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shantz. I don't see any questions. Next speaker, please, will be James, Mr. James Kilpatrick. Good morning, Mr. Kilpatrick. Welcome to the commission meeting. You have five minutes to address the commissioners.
Good morning, and I thank you. Like I said, I'm James Kilpatrick, live at 2101 West MacArthur Road, Wichita, Kansas. I do want to thank you. You know, in other countries, they kill the opposition, so it's nice that we're able to speak to you today. One thing I want to do is request that you end COVID-19 restrictions, the whole policy, and return to the policies that we've had in the past. You know, the official name for COVID-19 is SARS-CoV-2. That implies, and is true, that there's a SARS-CoV-1. Did you do any of this for SARS-CoV-1, or for the swine flu, or any of the other pandemics, or for any of the other flu seasons? So there's an element to this that we have to consider, and it's not the health of the public. Now, I'm not going to discuss Dr. Minns' order, because you've got that. You've had past communications with me, so I'm not going to go into the detail of those communications. But Dr. Minns had an interview with an Eagle reporter. Now, he had some comments in that interview that I find very interesting. First, he said he doesn't have strong evidence that bars and nightclubs have caused the increases in cases in COVID-19. To me, if you're going to take somebody's income, if you're going to disrupt their business, and if you're going to defame their name, you ought to have some strong evidence before you start doing that. So I understand his difficulty with acquiring evidence, but there seems to be no difficulty in attacking the people that are needing to make a living. Also, I myself have experienced friends who have lost their business because of the COVID-19 restrictions, not because they caught COVID-19, but because they caught the restrictions. And so I think that we're doing an injustice to the people. I want to relay one thing about regulations. When I was in the Navy, I was on a carrier. I had a shipmate. That shipmate had a father who was dying. The Navy was quite willing to fly him off the carrier, fly him home to see his dad, but they couldn't do it until the Red Cross authorized it. Well, the Red Cross authorized it after he died, and so I'm totally against the way we're handling medical patients and people in the care homes. This is not the time to disrupt their lives. Also, statistics are important in COVID-19. Dr. Minns stated, "Locally, our case numbers have started increasing, but testing has not increased." Two things about that. One, October is historically the month that pandemics and flu seasons peak, so there shouldn't be any alarm that we're having a peak time. The other thing is that on August 24th, we changed what we were doing. Prior to August 24th, we were testing the general population. So if you had an 8.9% rating of positive cases for the general population, that's pretty bad. But we shifted on August 24th to testing high-risk and people with symptoms. So an 8.9% in that category really isn't as bad, and you need to take a look that we've had this shift before you start making decisions about imposing longer or more regulations. You know, statistics, they don't relate to you the change in the testing standards we created. Give you another example about statistics. I listen to KWCH. They love to report KDHE statistics and the Sedgwick County Dashboard. On October 9th, KDHE reported 40 deaths. Well, they knew 40 deaths in one day. That, that's kind of alarming, so they explained it. They said they didn't really die that day. They had reconciled past death certificates. Now, what is reconciling? Well, it's very simple. The doctor said a person died of something, and then a clerk goes back and says, oh, no, he died of COVID-19, and so they changed it to a COVID-19 death. Ooh. Well, with 30 seconds left, the statistics are being manipulated and not interpreted properly. What I'm asking you to do is return back to the people their fortunes, their lives, and their sacred honor, and give them back their lives by doing away with this COVID-19. I realize there's many reasons why we're doing it, but unfortunately, it's not scientific, and we had a better way in the past. We should return to those ways. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. I don't see any questions. I appreciate, thank you for coming. Next up is Karen Bruet. I apologize for the mispronunciation. You've been here before, and I mispronounced again, so.
Well, it's a common pronunciation, but it's Brulette.
Brulette, okay. My apologies.
No problem.
Welcome to the commission meeting, and you have five minutes to address the commissioners.
Thank you. I'm here today to speak of the importance of freedom and justice, and the concern that many of us have of losing our freedom. This week, I heard a message that spoke of the moral framework that was created in the heart of man. This was not COVID-related. There are four areas comprising the framework we live by. There are evil, justice, love, and forgiveness. Some animals seem to know a bit about love and evil and even forgiveness, but justice is clearly a human attribute. Any of the four can keep us up at night and rule our hearts and minds, and contribute significantly to our attitude and conscience. They can cause us to sing for joy or cry out in pain. Any one of them can make us ask why and help us put our world in perspective. It's said that love makes the world go round, and perhaps it could be said that injustice stops it from spinning. A person who is just is guided by truth, reason, justice, and fairness. He is one who has a basis in conforming to fact or reason. Without the guidance of leaders who are fair and just, freedom is lost and the people despair. Our founding fathers experienced that loss and those injustices and created a constitution that has been unmatched in any other civilized government in the world. It's comprised of the rule of law, and has been cherished and sought after by people from every sector of life and from every continent of the world. Those rules are accountability, just laws applied equally, open government, and accessible government. For many in America and around the world, what is taking place surrounding COVID has taken away freedoms that are imperative to the survival of the moral framework of mankind. Many people in Sedgwick County are asking you to uphold the constitutional freedom of the people. At the beginning of COVID, everyone was in a scramble to figure out what to do and asked some, everyone for help, and help was ready, because this exact scenario had already been planned for and rehearsed by those who are now in control, including Dr. Fauci. The Global Vaccine Action Plan was announced in 2010, and in October 2019, another conference was held called the 201 Project. They worked on a plan for the next pandemic and were ready to help everyone execute it. The problem is, it hasn't worked out very well. In an effort to get where they want us to go, they've crossed boundaries and devastated our economies and the mental health and well-being of people all over the world. They are not our elected officials. They are not our local health commissioners. You are, and we want you to know, we want to know where you stand. We ask you to reject Dr. Minns' orders and make your own if need be. We want to see you talk for your people and make your own decisions. They should not be making plans and decisions for us that are infringing on our rights as never before seen in America. Some of the plans they made are being questioned as, to their constitutionality, and while adding an element of fear, people are still scrambling to do whatever they say is necessary. Fauci said in 2005, "In planning for a pandemic, you don't plan for the worst-case scenario. When it comes, then you'll, you've been grossly negligent and irresponsible, and that's a good idea for overall preparedness, but not for day-to-day operations." We cannot live in fear and be strong and individual, be strong and successful as an individual or a nation. Carrie Mullins, the inventor of the PCR test who died in 2018, said in regards to it being used incorrectly for HIV, "I'm a scientist, not a lifeguard." As stated by Celia Farber, that's a very important line in the sand. Somebody who goes around claiming they're saving lives is very dangerous. You should run in the opposite direction when you encounter them. Their weapon is fear, and their favorite word is "could." They entrap you with a form of biodet, creating simulations of every imaginable thing that could happen but hasn't. Dr. Mullins was a brilliant man who knew the limits of science and the complexity of the virus. Losing our freedom to unfair, fearful, and unjust rules made by a group of world leaders who have a financial gain in the solutions does not fit the plan of freedom that our founding fathers created for us. That plan found a way to provide for freedom and justice that would be given equally, without coercion or constraint in choice or action. Thankfully, we still have the freedom to speak boldly of injustice, express our political opinion, and vote. I pray with God on our side, as the author and creator of our moral framework, we will be allowed the freedom to walk within the moral code, and that there will once again be liberty and justice for all. I close with a verse from Micah 6:8. "He has shown you, O man, what is good; and what does the Lord require of you, but to do justice and to love mercy and to walk humbly with our God? May we all choose to do so."
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brulette.
Thank you.
I don't see any questions. Okay, the next speaker will address us publicly, and then we'll have two on the, on the phone. So next speaker will be Alan Peterson. Good morning, Mr. Peterson. Welcome to the commission meeting, and you have five minutes to address the commissioners.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you very much. I spoke with you guys a little over a month ago via the computer Zoom. I've got a lot of stuff to try to get through, so I'm not going to get through it all, but I just wanted to appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak again. Since I last spoke here, I told you that my kids were homeschooled, and they are. My oldest had since gone back to Derby to enroll part-time as a, not distance learner, but as a, for elective courses only. So she's taking a marketing class. She got caught up in the football scandal with the COVID thing, has been exposed in close contact to somebody who tested positive for COVID. At that time, there were like 300 that were swooped up initially, and then it reduced that number to 94. Anyway, speaking out against that, because we had gotten a phone call at the time from the Health Department, or somebody representing the Health Department, saying that, you know, basically, our kid was quarantined, can't go back to school 14 days. We took that also to mean she couldn't work, so we notified her employer, and she couldn't work. I kind of pushed back initially and said, well, what would happen if I took my kid back to school? And they said, well, we would give you a court summons, and you'd have to appear in court. And so I didn't think that was a great approach for me to take, so I said, okay, fine, we'll play the game. Well, there's a Derby family, I'm sure you're probably familiar with last week, that decided to do exactly that when their kid was quarantined for the second time, after just having come off quarantine. They came back three days later, they got quarantined again, and they said, hey, we're going to send our kid back to school. It was only then that they actually got a legal health order signed by Dr. Minns in compliance with Kansas law. If I had more time, I'd read the full statute, but I'll read you some of the high points here. It's Kansas law, KSA, statute 65-129C. It deals with the previous statute, and it says, "Orders for isolation for quarantine form and content, notice hearing in district court, application in effect, procedure, orders for relief, emergency rules, etc." Okay, it says, under this law, the amendments thereto, "The local health officer, Dr. Minns or the secretary, Dr. Norman, I'm assuming, shall issue, shall issue an order to the individual or group of individuals, and it shall specify the identity of the individuals, the subject of quarantine, the premises subject to quarantine, the date and time of which isolation quarantine commences, suspected infectious or contagious disease that causes all this, the basis upon which isol- which isolation is justified, and the availability of a hearing to contest the order. I can tell you, I was on the phone with the Health Department lady for over a half hour, and she did not give me that opportunity to say that I had an option to even contest. I wasn't familiar with the law at the time. And she didn't even furnish me an actual written copy of the so-called order that the schools are now receiving. That order is crafted in language that kind of masks itself, pardon the pun, with, you know, the law itself, but it's not because it's not in compliance. It doesn't contain information about being able to contest in court, having 72 hours to be able to have your case heard, having counsel provided for you even. It doesn't, what was the other part of that? Anyway, it's just not complete. So, so much so, I mean, that this has even got the attention of the Sentinel out in Kansas City, where there's an article that said, talking about the Blue Valley and the Latham School Districts aren't the only ones deliberately deceiving parents with bogus quarantine orders that are really more than suggestions. Parents in Derby and Ottawa School District also have been victims. I'm going to read what they have here as a quote, kind of substitute our health officer. Not only was the order not issued by the local health officer, in this, in our case, Dr. Menz, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, it says, but it met none of the legal requirements for quarantine order, including among other things, the identity of the individuals ordered to quarantine, specified premises, quarantine, most importantly, requirement to provide due process hearing within 72 hours, all of which are required to be included in the order. They're not. But they were just basically saying that, you know, even though they're masking it as a requirement, it really isn't because it doesn't have the force of law. And so, Dr. Menz, who expects us to comply with all these various mandates, he himself is not following Kansas law, which is a little concerning. These guys had since reversed course out there in the eastern part of the state, and they said what was, they said, "Pre-request, I'm sending you this letter to confirm on April 8th that parents of the district, it was not meant to be constituted as a mandatory order, but rather a strong recommendation." In Sedgwick County, demand, letter from an attorney was apparently not enough. Craig Anhauser, who is the Derby family's attorney I spoke of earlier, was forced to file a lawsuit on behalf of Derby, a Kansas freshman. He was, he said, "The hundreds, if not thousands, have been quarantined in the same situation." Derby, since it came out in court yesterday, or last week, as of last Wednesday, there were 36 positive cases, 486 kids, otherwise healthy kids, quarantined. Just unacceptable and just not sustainable. I don't know how we get past this, you know? I mean, it was the idea of, you know, two weeks to flatten the curve, you know? I mean, what happened? It's been six months. What's, where's the end in sight here? I mean, are we waiting on the magic, you know, vaccine? Is that what it is? Or how do we move beyond? I mean, just from a numbers standpoint, and this may have spoke about this earlier, I'm not sure, but the CDC had a recent study that came out back in July.
Mr. Peterson, I'm sorry, your time has been up.
Okay. Was it five minutes or three? I was told I had five.
It was five.
Okay. Like I said, I had a lot of info, and I knew I wasn't going to get through it all. But just last thing, reference the statute again, 65-129(c). Advise you all to brush up on it, bring us back into compliance with the law if you expect us to abide by all this. All right? You have some time. Do you have any questions?
I don't see any questions, Mr. Peterson. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Mr. Manager, we have a phone with Katie Marshall or Joshua McCoy.
Katie, are you on the line? Katie, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay. Welcome, Miss Marshall, to the commission meeting. You have five minutes to address the commission.
Okay. Well, I'm just speaking from home today, and because I didn't want to stand outside. But I guess what concerns me a lot about this right now is people with medical conditions, people who have allergies or asthma, people who can't wear masks and then are excluded from being able to speak, who are excluded from certain stores or just flying, everything like that, just because they can't wear a mask. So that would be, you know, discrimination against the disabled, which is a very scary thing to me. And then, and then also, you know, I think about religious objections, people who are conscientious objectors, and so you have the concern for freedom of religion, and we're already seeing people in California not being able to go to church, not being able to even do like home Bible studies, or getting arrested for singing. So I think, you know, a part of me is really starting to think, is this just, just an attack on, you know, freedom? And I think about the kids who, you know, go to school, and, you know, if you think about what is the first two things a person will do if they want to kidnap a child, they would cover their mouth and put a gun to their head. And we have kids going to school who are constantly having to cover their mouths and putting temperature guns to their heads throughout the day. So I feel like there is an indoctrination of subservience being taught to our children, which is very scary as well. And I think even just the logic of the fact that apparently if I were to go into the building, then people would get sick and die, which I think the chances of that, even if I had the virus, which I've felt healthier than I ever have. And then the idea that if I go in there, somehow I'm going to kill all these people with my breath, is ridiculous to think, because even if I did by chance have the virus and pass it, 99% of the people that get it are going to survive. And so, just, just the logic of how every single thing that would have to take place would be, just all the stuff that would have to line up for all of that to happen is just, I think, ridiculous. You know, the fact that, you know, and I don't think a lot of people like to talk about the fact that if, that somehow my mask would work, but yours wouldn't. So the virus can't get past my mask, apparently, but if I'm not wearing one, it could get through somebody who is, but they're made out of the same material. And so what they're doing is they're using the same argument they've used for vaccinations the entire time, because obviously, if vaccinations work, if you have a vaccination, why should I have to get it? And they're saying, well, but you have to because you don't know. Well, I mean, if that's the case, there's holes in the argument, because if vaccinations don't work, then, you know, then what's the point in the first place? So, but if they do work, then why should everybody have to get them? And so I guess my question is, when is the mask mandate going to end? I don't think anybody has an answer. I think that we all know that this is just, they're waiting until the vaccination, and then they're going to force people to get certificates of vaccination, you know, identification documents, which just happens to start COVID. And, I mean, first, it was going to be August 8th, then October 21st, now we're here in December 15th. They're just stretching this out. We're on about 180 days of two weeks to slow the spread. It's all just a gimmick and a ploy and just a way for the government to get more control over the people. And the lobster in the boiling pot. I mean, you know, take away a little bit of freedom here so that people don't really notice. I mean, it's just a mask, right? Take away a little bit of freedom here, and then after that, they'll take away a little bit more, and a little bit more. And we've seen, we've seen all of this happen. We saw all of this happen in Germany in the 40s. I mean, the Holocaust didn't start out as concentration camps. Started out as just wear this, everything's fine, just wear this, this yellow star, and you have a curfew, and, you know, don't ask questions, everything's fine, and then it's just one thing after another, and freedom was stripped away more and more.
Excuse me, Ms. Marshall. Excuse me.
Anyways, I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay. Your five. Ms. Marshall, you need to.
And I probably don't have too much more today, but.
Ms. Marshall, you need to, your five minutes is expired, and so.
Okay. Bye.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next up is Joshua McCoy.
Desiree, are you on the phone? You might give us a second, Chairman. He's going to be transferred in.
Good.
Desiree, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Mr. McCoy, welcome to the county commission meeting. You have five minutes to address the commission, and if you hear a beep in the background at the end of your five minutes, that's when it's up.
Sounds good.
Good morning.
Okay. What I want to talk about today, I'm kind of reaching out to the small audience that watches this whole process through YouTube or Facebook or PBS. I'm going to read over some messages I had with a local district attorney, District 25, Mary Ware. This conversation was started on September 11th on my part. Her response began yesterday. "I asked Mary Ware, what is your stance on the mask mandate in Sedgwick County?" Her response, and I quote, "Our epidemiologists tell us that the masks we wear protect others from our germs, and the masks protect us from their germs. I wear a mask in public because I would not want to expose anyone to my potential germs. For me, it's a matter of respect and concern for my neighbors. We've seen many times over that the people stop following the CDC guidelines, we're experiencing a rise in infections. As a society, we do not do many things that are not convenient in the name of public safety, and we don't think anything of it. It surprises me so many folks have such a high level of concern in this thing." My response. How about looking at the new CDC study results? And this goes for all of you guys sitting in there. Look at the new CDC study results that have come out. 3.9% of people that do not ever wear a mask are contributing to the new cases of COVID. 70.6% that always wear a mask are contributing to the new cases of COVID-19. And after that, I sent her a screenshot of the CDC.gov site with these numbers specifically on there. Then I asked her, I said, "I'll be waiting for your response." Her response was, is some bizarre math, but I'm going to go ahead and quote it. Mary Ware, as I quote, "When the never-wear numbers, 3.9%, is divided by the always-wear number, you get 0.2%. It comes to nearly 20." Someone who, hold it down, someone who never wears a mask are 20 times more likely to succumb to COVID. Now, this is just me speaking out of context here. I don't know where the heck you get 20% out of these numbers. This doesn't address, and back to Mary Ware's comment, this doesn't address where we already know, however, that wearing a mask isn't most about self-protection, it's about protecting others. I don't know where in time or history where we've had to worry about somebody else's life besides our own. And, you know, we all put on seatbelts in our car to protect ourselves. We don't put our seatbelts on in the car to protect the other driver from us flying out of the car and accidentally killing them. But anyways, so my response to her was, this is directly from the CDC. What you have just told me is you are a part of the numbers manipulation team. Thank you. Her reply to that, "It's just basic math." And I said, "It's a manipulation of the truth." And then I asked Mary, I said, "Give me a little more on how you figure your basic math. Our group is slightly confused." Then her response was, I quote, "Desiree, it seems clear now that you are not wanting a dialogue. It seems that you are just wanting to push your agenda. My only agenda is public safety. I'll leave it at that." I'm not exactly sure what her agenda of public safety is. It takes over a month to get any kind of response from her. My reply to that was, "I'm part of the growing public that can see your numbers and our local and state numbers don't add up. You are taking a study done by the CDC and manipulating their numbers when there is no need to do further math, as the CDC has already done the math on that. That is their numbers they made public. Their numbers, directly from the CDC." Back on to the manipulation part. So I got a little clue on how you guys have been playing with the numbers and how Dr. Menz and Dr. Norman or however you guys have some kind of badass words way of doing math throughout this whole process to scare the general public into believing that there is this massive pandemic and that we're still under this emergency order, which is false. I'm going to ask that the vote, that the public vote for Vale, and I'm not sure how to pronounce his last name. He will be taking Mary Ware's seat in this coming election. I also want to ask that the general public in District 3 vote for Tonia Hudson. Her name is spelled T-O-N-Y-A-H-U-D-S-O-N. She is a write-in, and we have to get her name spelled correctly.
Mr. McCoy.
Do you guys have any questions?
I don't see any questions.
I'd be willing to give you guys' numbers right off the top of my head on any questions you ask.
Okay. Thank you. If you wanted, you could submit those to the, on the website, and they will disperse it to us. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next up, Madam Clerk.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring Red Ribbon Week.
Commissioners, we have a proclamation this morning. I will read it. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse, and whereas Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles and will be celebrated in communities across the nation on October 23rd through the 31st, and whereas businesses, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, and other community-based organizations will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red ribbons and participating in drug prevention activities. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Chairman Pete Meitzner, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of October 23rd through the October 31st, 2020, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage you to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle. This proclamation is done October 21st, 2020. And Commissioners, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second, and I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here, accepted, is Greg Anderson, DEA resident agent in charge. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for allowing me to come. I appreciate the leadership that the commission has and the support of Red Ribbon activities. I think it's vitally important to help our communities improve in this county, and actually the southwest, south-central Kansas region. We have to get the message out to promote healthy lifestyles and help the kids really understand that they can say no, and drug-free is the way to go. Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you for all your service as well. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Clifford Cohen from the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Mr. Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papun, County Counselor. Item B, first item of appointments, is the resignation of Mr. Kane. This is Commissioner Dennis's, one of his three appointments to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging. We'd ask that you accept his resignation.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Mr. Cohen for his service on the Agent and Advisory Council over the past few years that he's unable to continue. So I now have an opening, if anyone is interested in. Uh, so I now have an opening if anyone is interested in serving on that Advisory Council. We're taking applications. You can go on the website and, uh, fill out an application. With that, I want to thank once again Mr. Cohen and move that we accept his resignation.
I'll second that. There's been a motion and a second to accept the resignation. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, resolution appointing Tom Page to the Wichita Cedric County Access Advisory Board.
Okay, again, Mr. Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Upon Commissioner Cruz's recommendation, we prepared a resolution appointing Tom Page to her Citizens Advisory Board. Resolution's in proper form and we'd ask that you adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I am excited that Tom Page wants to serve in this capacity. He's a busy guy playing around town with his guitar. He's very talented, but I hope that he will, I know that he will bring a much-needed voice to this board. So I would make a motion appointing Tom Page to the Access Advisory Board.
I'll second that. Been a motion and a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Luke Sponsel to the Cedric County Third District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Papun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. If it's all right with the board, we can take Items D and E together. They're both appointments by Commissioner Dennis to his Citizens Advisory Board. The first resolution is appointing Luke Sponsel to his board. And the second resolution is appointing Carl Losi. The resolutions are in proper form and ask that you adopt the resolutions.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Uh, a few weeks ago, I announced that I had two openings on the board and several people did fill out applications online. I am proud to nominate both Luke Sponsel and Carl Losi to my Citizens Advisory Board. This now fills my entire Citizens Advisory Board. Um, but if anyone is interested in serving in the future on that, we do put applications online and I keep a file of those. So with that, I want to make a motion that we appoint Luke Sponsel and Carl Losi to my Citizens Advisory Board. Thank you.
I'll second that. Okay, any other comments? Uh, being none, been a motion and a second for these two appointments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. And they'll, and they'll be sworn in and receive their certificates. Okay, um, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, Item F, PUD 2020-0005, county zoning change from rural residential to planned unit development for group residence general, generally located on the south side of East 101st Street North and within one-half mile east of the North Hydraulic Avenue. 2221 East 101st Street North, Kechai urban area on implement.
Okay. Good morning, Scott Wadel. Welcome to the commission meeting.
Good morning, and thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt briefly, I think it'd be behoof the commission to announce any ex parte communications they might have had in this matter.
Okay. Commissioners, based on the recommendation, thanks for the reminder. Commissioner Cruz.
I have had ex parte communication in the form of phone call, email. I also had the applicants, they attended my Citizens Advisory Board. Um, but I am keeping an open mind and have not made up my mind as far as the decision that I'll be making today.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Uh, nope, I don't see any. So thank you for, for that disclosure. Okay, now, Scott Wadel. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. Uh, this case, PUD 2020-05, is a zoning request by the applicant, Youth Horizons. The site is located southeast of Hydraulic and 101st Street. It is approximately 40 acres in size, developed with a single-family residence with several accessory structures and is zoned rural residential. The applicant has requested a rezoning to a planned unit development to permit a group residence, uh, general for at-risk girls. The requested rezoning would allow for up to six additional residential units with a total maximum capacity of 48 persons, including the girls, staff, and staff family members. The PUD includes a 50-foot setback along the perimeter of the site. The property is surrounded to the west, south, and east by properties in the city limits of Kechai and developed as large-lot, single-family residences. To the north is a bingo hall zoned rural residential. The MAPC held a public hearing on September 10th and recommended approval of the rezoning 11 to 0. Several neighbors spoke in opposition to the requested rezoning. The expressed concerns were related to safety, crime, and water service. Protests representing 32.85% of the protest area were submitted. The Kechai Planning Commission considered the request and voted 4 to 1 to recommend denial of the rezoning. At the meeting, several neighbors spoke in opposition, expressing similar concerns to those presented to the MAPC. The Citizens Advisory Board for Cedric County District 4 heard the item and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of the rezoning. Action options include the following. Approve the zone change request, the PUD, as recommended by the MAPC. Adopt the findings of the MAPC and authorize the chairman to sign the prepared resolution. This would require a supermajority of four out of five votes. Second is to modify the recommendations of the MAPC, make alternative findings, approve the zone change with the modified conditions or requirements, and authorize the chairman to sign a revised resolution. Requires, again, four out of five votes. Third is to deny the application by making alternative findings and override the MAPC recommendation. This requires a 2/3 majority, or four out of five votes. And the fourth is to return the case to the MAPC for further consideration. The statement specifying the basis for the board's, uh, returning that to the MAPC and deny the application requires three, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, basis for the board's discussion deliberation, sending it back to the MAPC, and that would require a majority of three out of five votes. With that, I'll take you through some images of the case. And I do want to state that there are representatives of the applicant here today.
Okay.
So here's the aerial of the site. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan showing this urban growth area. Here are photos from the site. This is looking south along the drive. Looking north. Some of the outbuildings. There's the house. The pond. Here's the map of the protest area. Uh, this one is out quite a bit. You can see in blue there were protests that were submitted that were not in the formal protest area. Ones in red are. And here it is zoomed in a little bit closer. There's the aerial. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, at this time, does the commission have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, there'll be some questions, Scott, but, uh, this is a new business item and a zoning. And at this time, I want to ask if anybody from the public would like to address the commission. Okay, we have a couple, or at least one. But please, uh, come to the podium, state your name and address and.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Russ AV, agent for the applicant with Baughman Company. And with me are several representatives of Youth Horizons organization that will be better able to address some operational, uh, questions that you may have. I just wanted to take a brief moment to go over what is relatively a pretty straightforward zoning request. Uh, 40 acres, as Scott's site pictures show, it's a very well-secluded property on all four sides, quite frankly. Uh, we cannot see into the property, cannot really see out of the property very well. So it was, uh, in at least my professional opinion, a very, uh, nice location for such a type of facility, uh, for a number of reasons. We had a series of three public hearings to date. Uh, and as Scott mentioned, uh, I would say ha- at least half of the comments and questions and concerns area residents had dealt with the ability to provide water and sewer service on, on this 40 acres. And I think as we all know, uh, that is a more of a plating and building permit issue as opposed to a land use issue. So I thought we were able to readily address some of those concerns. Uh, I will say that to date, I have been, uh, representing this application, uh, with one condition, that we had an issue with staff over, and that is a plating condition. Uh, I would like to state for the record that we're willing to agree to staff's original recommendation, although we were approved for a plating exemption. It is the intention of Youth Horizons to plat this property, uh, prior to development. So, uh, we withdraw that additional request and would, uh, wish to conform with staff's original set of conditions. With the hope that this plating process, the next step in this journey, will provide answers to some of those area residents as it relates to water service through the rural water district and onsite sewer lagoons and things of that nature. I'll stand for any questions. Other, otherwise, I would, uh, turn it over to, uh, the President, Robert Gartner of Youth Horizons, or any of his staff members, uh, to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Okay, at this point, thanks for clarifying some of that. And, uh, I don't see any questions for you. Is anybody, anybody else want to address the commission? Good morning, sir. Please state your name and address and, or title or.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Robert Garner, President of, of Youth Horizons. And first of all, I'm grateful to stand before you, Commissioners, to, um, ask, answer any questions that you might have relative to the project and our intentions. And, but just as a very brief overview, um, Youth Horizons has been around for a few decades, serving, uh, our most vulnerable population, um, of boys and girls, boys in a residential facility, uh, and boys and girls in community-based and school-based mentoring. Um, and so we are, um, like a faith-based organization. And, um, our strong desire is to meet, uh, the need that is expressed so often in Wichita area. We have embarked on this journey about a year or so ago, um, when a resident of Kechai, um, gifted, uh, his property and his estate to our organization and expressed the need for, uh, services to, uh, vulnerable, um, girls. And obviously, we were very prayerful and, and have been in close communication with some of our local partners and the providers, DCF included, St. Francis Ministries, um, KBC, uh, and a few other, uh, community-based interest groups to meet the needs of the girls and, and have gotten further direction from them on what the need is and how best to meet it. And so our goal is to move forward with that. So if there are any specific questions, I'm happy to, um, address them.
Okay, yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, first, I'd like to say hello to Van. Thank you. I'm so glad you're here today. Good to see you. We've missed you here, but glad that you're doing something you love. Okay, so thank you for being here today and sharing this with us. I do, I just have a question about, what is the timeframe for completion of this project?
Yes, so our goal is, we were certainly waiting for, uh, your support and so forth. And we've been planning for, uh, a little over a year. And our hope is to, uh, commence, uh, the construction project after, um, your approval. Um, and, uh, 22 of January, uh, January 2022 is when we're hopeful to deliver services to our young girls. And so we are in the process of establishing programming. Um, and we're in the process of, um, the design and construction phase, um, as we await, um, your answer today.
Okay, so you have, in, how many homes? How many homes are set?
Yeah.
Four or five?
Yes, so our goal initially is to construct two homes.
Okay, two homes.
Yes, and an activity center to provide some programming, um, with the girls. So two homes initially.
Okay, but the total homes, what's your, what's your long-range goal?
Long range is four to six.
Okay.
Four to six.
Okay. And then, I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe Scott, but what kind of boundaries? You say that it's kind of a secluded area, but what kind of boundaries are required? Um, like whether it's shrubbery or fencing, or what, what kind of boundaries are required?
I'm not apprised specifically of the boundaries. I know there is a hedgerow, but in terms of requirements, I'm not certain.
Again, Russ AV for the applicant. There would be no screening requirements or any fencing requirements per the Unified Zoning Code as it relates to any type of residential, uh, operation. Uh, I know that there was one comment made, I believe, during the Kechai Planning Commission meeting about fencing these people in. But short of that, there would be no screening or landscaping requirement, uh, per se, from the zoning code for this particular use.
Okay, thank you. I'm not, I'm not suggesting it, I'm just asking.
Certainly.
The question, yeah, yeah.
Certainly.
Yeah, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Thank you for addressing this and clarifying.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else from the public want to address the commission? Okay, I don't see anything. We will close the, uh, the, uh, public comment on this item and bring the discussion back to the bench. I don't see any questions. Commissioner Cruz, it's in your, it's in your district.
No questions from anyone?
I don't see any.
All right. Um, so I asked some, I, I know that the opposition to this had concerns around safety. They had concerns around water and then, um, in addition to safety, police presence. So I feel like when I discuss this, um, the sheriff advises us that, um, he will be, his office will be able to manage an increase of calls, should there be one. And then the plating process will take care of the water and sewer concern. So I feel like with those main concerns, um, addressed and the recommendation from our MAPC, I would like to make a motion to approve the zone change and follow MAPC recommendations.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions from the commission? I don't see any. So being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Good luck to, to the project. Thank you for answering all our questions. Give it a second to vacate the room and then. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, consideration of a resolution approving the issuance by the governing body of the City of Wichita, Kansas, of its taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, and equipping of an aircraft training facility to be located in the environs of the said city and within an unincorporated area of the county.
Okay. Good morning, Brent Shelton. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner. Good morning, Commissioners. Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. The item before you is a, was a request from the City of Wichita for a resolution to approve a city resolution for a letter of intent to, to issue industrial revenue bonds for flight safety, Textron aviation training in an amount not to exceed $11,400,000. Be for real and personal property improvements to a property at 1009 North Greenwich. Now, this property is situated within the boundaries of the Beach Wichita Industrial District, and it's therefore within three miles of the city limits of Wichita, although outside the city limits of Wichita. And therefore, their, um, resolution requires County Commission approval. Now, it's anticipated that the proposed bonds would be exempt from property taxation for a period of five-plus-five years. And then it also would be requesting a sales and use tax exemption for the personal property purchases under these bonds. After approving the letter of intent yesterday, uh, the City Council delivered notice of this action to Cedric County, and they are requesting approval by the county of the city's resolution of intent to issue the industrial revenue bonds. Today, you have three options available to you. One is that you can vote affirmatively to approve this resolution. The second thing is that you could vote to disapprove the resolution. The second thing is that you could vote to disapprove the resolution. Third, you could take no action. That would be the same, have the same effect as though you made a vote to approve the motion. In terms of background, Flight Safety was founded in 1951. They're a global provider of professional training to operators of military and commercial aircraft. The proceeds from the proposed industrial revenue bonds would be used to renovate the building on North Greenwich, to basically triple their simulator capacity from two simulators to six. When that first simulator is installed in 2021, it is intended to support pilot training for the new Textron Sky Courier aircraft. Flight Safety currently employs 284 people in this region, and this project will add five jobs with an average annual wage of $90,000. In addition to those direct job benefits, a number of pilots travel to this region to receive training, and it's anticipated that the one new simulator will bring 100 visitors to the region next year, another 150 the second year, 200 in the out years. The 11.4 million in bond proceeds would be used to make about $850,000 to $900,000 in improvements to the real estate. Those improvements would be on the tax roll at the conclusion of the property tax abatement period. About $10.5 million would be used to purchase the flight simulators and other personal property. Those, under state law, would continue to be tax-exempt. Now, with economic development projects, we always want to assure that it's fiscally sound for the governing bodies to proceed. And to assure that, the city requested a benefit-to-cost analysis done by the Center for Business Research at WSU, with an annual estimated property tax abatement from the county alone of about $5,000. This provides Satchwee County with a 6.6 to 1 benefit-to-cost ratio. In other words, for every dollar that the county would forego in public expense, we're going to get $6.60 back in public benefits. That's basically the conclusion or summary of this proposal. I would recommend that we approve the resolution and authorize the appropriate signatures. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, as well as Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, who is our bond counsel.
Thank you, Brent. I appreciate this. Brief comment, I'm very familiar with Flight Safety and their operations, became very more familiar with them after they had that tragic plane crash out there at Eisenhower, where they lost some lives, and very tragic. And as a result of that, I worked closely with them, because they have operations in many parts of the country, including, I think, Dallas, and down in Florida, Orlando, I believe. Major operations, and they bring in pilots from all over the world for training, and, as you mentioned, and when they stay, it's everywhere from seven days to 10 days, depending on what their recertification is. But my closing is that, at one time, there was a consideration of Flight Safety to invest more in these other cities' operations for their growth, and basically, Flight Safety would have been idle here, or non-growth, and maybe even a downsizing. So that was a tremendous, difficult times to work through, but I was so pleased, and our community was so pleased, that they ended up choosing to stay in Wichita area, and with a promise that they were going to grow. Each of these simulators, by the way, I think there's no secret, these are basically the cost of a plane. I mean, they can be $10, $12 million for one simulator. So the investment that they're making, and they've held to their word by not only staying here, but growing. This is at least the second time, I think the third time, that they've had some growth plans. So if anybody from Flight Safety is watching or paying attention, I just want to extend my sincere appreciation that not only you've chose to stay in our community, but to grow in our community, and it's just my sincere thank you. So I don't know if there's any other comments. I'd be glad to make a motion to approve this. I don't see other comments. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll make a second to your motion, but echo your statement about Flight Safety and their investment in our community. It's extremely critical for the health of our aviation companies. So I echo Commissioner Meitzner's gratitude if they're listening to us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of the governing body of the City of Wichita, related to the bond, to this industrial revenue bond opportunity. Motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Brent, and thank you again, Flight Safety, for choosing our priority as your home. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of a general obligation refunding an improvement bond Series A 2020 of Cedric County, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I think you just gave us the proposal.
I can go to the panel.
Lindsay, now make sure your mask is on straight, not upside down. Okay?
Yes, sir. I'll make sure. Thank you.
Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Poruso, your CFO. It is my pleasure this morning to present the final in a series of agenda items that you have considered since earlier this year to consider a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding and improvement bonds Series 2020A in the amount of $4,545,000. Now, your backup documents do say that it was going to be estimated at, or the principal would be estimated at $4,965,000, as it turns out, and we'll get more into this in a moment. But with the bids that were actually received yesterday, we were able to essentially buy down that principal, and so we have a lower amount that would actually be requested to be issued. Here today, we have Tom Calico from Baker Tully, our municipal advisor, and Garth Herman with our bond counsel at Gilmore and Bell. They will take turns coming up to the podium to talk with you about today's action. But today's action would fund $2.82 million worth of five bridge projects. Two of those projects actually have the same title and for the same work, but were technically split into two projects. Another $474,000 would finance improvements at the Campus Complex Edition, to be funded with special assessments. And then, we will also have a refunding of $1.6 million of the county's 2010A general obligation bonds, which were taxable, to achieve interest cost savings over the remaining term of that debt. The refunded portion originally financed various road and bridge projects, and the term of that refunded debt has not changed, so we do still have 10 years of payments left on that. You will see that in the backup documentation, the debt policy has been complied with in the development of this proposal and the payment schedule. All of our debt ratios have been met, except for one, and that is allowable under the policy. And again, that measure is the one that takes all of the debt in the entire community and puts it on a per capita basis. And so that is the only metric where we exceed. And you can see that for the same metric, just looking at county debt, we are well under our threshold. And so that means that essentially, that other debt is coming from other communities or other taxing entities. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would like to proceed to asking Tom Calico to come to the podium to speak with you about the bond sale itself and the process, and then he will be followed by Garth Herman, who will speak to the resolution and actions before you this morning. Okay.
Okay. I don't see any questions so far. Tom, welcome to the commission meeting. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. So picking up on where Lindsay left off, we did take bids on the bonds yesterday at 1:00. We were fortunate enough to receive four bids. The winning bid was from FHN Financial Capital Markets. They're out of Memphis, Tennessee, and the true interest cost was 1.19%. This rate is extremely competitive, based on both comparable transactions recently in the market, as well as market indices. At that rate, the county's going to realize a present value savings from the refunding portion of about $200,000. Looking at, on an annual basis, it's a cash flow savings of about $21,300 per year. In conjunction with the issuance of the bonds, we did apply for a rating from S&amp;P Global. S&amp;P affirmed the county's AAA rating on its outstanding obligations, and assigned the AAA rating to this obligation as well. In their report, S&amp;P cited various strengths of the county. Those include the financial management of the county, its budgetary flexibility, which is essentially the money you have in the bank, your fund balance, that's available to deal with unanticipated needs, liquidity, which is cash on hand, and then the county's relatively low debt. So with that, I want to congratulate you on another highly successful sale, and I'll be happy to respond to any questions. Otherwise, I'll yield to my colleague, Garth Herman from Gilmore and Bell.
In their comments, did they also mention the strong leadership of our county manager?
They did. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. I don't see any comments. Thanks again, Tom.
Thank you.
For clarifying that. So that AAA rating is pretty valuable for the county.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Okay. Garth, welcome to the commission meeting.
Yes. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for having me this morning. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the county's bond counsel. As usual, Lindsay and Tom have done such a good job, they didn't leave much for me, which most people appreciate. So the last two steps in order to formalize the process, as they mentioned, the county had a very successful bond sale yesterday. The last two steps would be to formally award the sale of the bonds by accepting the bid and awarding that sale to FHN Financial Capital Markets, and then the actual adoption of the bond resolution itself. For everybody's benefit, the bond resolution is a document that really contains the details concerning the bonds, both the projects that they are going to finance, as Lindsay mentioned, the bridge projects and the Campus Complex Edition road project. It also describes the refunded bonds, those 2010 bonds, the proceeds of these bonds are going to refund for those cost savings. It also contains the final principal amounts, interest rates, and repayment terms that will apply to these bonds, as long as they're outstanding, and make sure that they are, you know, timely paid in the amount set forth in that actual bid. You know, with that being said, I know it's a rather large document, so if there are any questions or any, you know, specific details that you would like some more information on, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions to the best of my ability. If there are not any questions, I would ask for a motion and a second to actually accept the bid and award the sale with a vote on that. And then the second step would be a motion and a second to adopt the bond resolution itself. So with that being said, I'll stand for questions.
I don't see any questions. Garth, can you repeat? You're going to need two motions, it sounds like.
Yeah. A motion and a second on accepting the bid from FHN Financial Capital Markets, and then once that vote has happened, then a motion and a second to adopt the bond resolution itself.
I don't see any other questions. I'll make a motion to accept the bid from FHN. Okay. Motion and a second to accept the bid. I don't see any other questions. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And I'll also make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented on item H. There's a motion and a second to accept, to adopt the resolution. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks again, Garth, for the explanation. Tom, thank you. Lindsay, congratulations again on another fantastic, not only the AAA rating, but we're already seeing that, I saw effectively saving the county $21,000 plus a year going forward with this item. So thank you.
Thank you all very much.
You bet. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stoles, county manager. We'll have two speakers today. Brent Shelton will get up first, and then Lindsay will follow. Brent will present the external funding programs' status, and we've asked the commission to receive and file if they deem appropriate. Lindsay will get up and have a specific budgetary ask regarding some interoperable software systems for the Health Department, which we would ask for a vote on. And then the rest of her information is this update on the numbers, and we would ask that the commission receive and file. So with that, Brent, we'll start with you.
Okay. So it's always worth repeating, for at least for me, and I think the Commissioners. So we're going to have a presentation from Brent that will be a receive and file. And then we will have Lindsay with a budget request that will require a vote, and then Lindsay will also then give us a status, and which will be another receive and file. Okay. We're ready to go. Brent, welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman Meitzner and Commissioners. Again, for the record, Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. My presentation this morning is going to be pretty brief, not because there's not a lot going on, but it's just sort of ongoing and updates of some numbers. So first of all, on the Public Health and Social Service Agencies, we've worked with our Communications Department to enhance the marketing efforts and so forth, and those are all underway to notify the community that that portal is still open. There's still over $6 million in funds remaining for Public Health and Social Service Agencies. We've seen those applications beginning now to come in, so I think that by next Wednesday, we should have some award recommendations for you. The stimulus review team continues to meet every Monday morning at 9:00. So once they have made those award recommendations, we'll make, put that package together and have it ready for you for the Wednesday County Commission meeting.
Brent, along that, so the meetings are Monday morning, and then you will formalize, they formalize their recommended awards.
Right.
And I think, based on our experience, is our, is our goal to try to get at least a draft copy to the commission...
By Monday afternoon.
Monday afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That'll be helpful.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for clarifying.
And to that end, there are no new funding recommendations from them today.
Okay. Thank you.
But as they come in, we'll endeavor to get those to you on Monday afternoon, after they've met. In our Safe Operating Grants Program, that portal, as scheduled, did close Sunday, October 18th, at midnight. Through that process, we received 1,376 applications at the time of closing. Those are from businesses and from 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations across the county. Checks continue to go out in our normal Tuesday and Thursday check runs, and at the end of business yesterday, we had distributed $956,250 in the 5,000 and under grants to these companies and nonprofits across the county. Our PPE kit distribution continues at most all of the 14 original locations. I think Mays has discontinued distributing from there, but we're continuing to distribute a lot through the interest bank arena. There's still about 3,000 kits available. They'll be able, be available for distribution through the remainder of this week. I would encourage people, if you go to vote, at the south side of the arena, business owners and nonprofits can go around the corner to entrance C on the north side. It's open from 9:00 to 3:00 to pick up a PPE kit. So we're continuing to get those out. It's just 10,000 kits take a while to get distributed throughout the community. And we've had some conversations with our partners that are working on the workforce development. development proposals. They're beginning to work through the scholarship processes, purchase equipment and so forth, and stand up those employer-specific trainings that they propose to us in those proposals. So with that, I'll answer any questions, and otherwise, we'd recommend that you receive and file.
Okay, thanks for the update on all those numbers and programs. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Brent, for the update, as always. So the Safe Operating Grants were at 1376.
That's correct.
That was what you said. And so, out of that money, that's about $6.8 million if we were to fund all of those at $5,000 apiece.
That is correct.
What was the total amount that we allotted for this category?
7.5 million for those. And it's, with that number, 1,376, as that portal closes, what we do now is look through and eliminate any duplicates from that. And then we're in a position to reopen that portal for continued, continued acceptance. We don't want to get in a position where we've accepted 16 or 1,700 applications and we've run out of money. So it's kind of that, that balancing act of when it's open, when it's not.
Okay.
So there's still some capacity in that program.
Okay, so, and this was the conversation we had last week that we're, I mean, you said it closed, but we extended it to open it for nonprofits, non-for-profits.
Right. It, it's either open for all or open for none, and right now, the portal has closed.
So what was the portal that we talked about we weren't going to close?
That's for the Public Health and Social Service Agencies.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, there's a lot of portals here.
As I was thinking about the comments from last week, I think I may have been confusing in what I was saying. But the Safe Operating Grant Portal is closed. Public Health and Social Services is still open.
Okay. So if the Safe Operating Grant Portal has closed, and we have allotted $7.5 million, if all of those 1376, those applications, none of them are duplicates, that leaves right around, I believe, $600,000 left, roughly.
Okay, yes.
My math adding up, I think so.
Sounds like good math to me.
$620,000, I believe, is the exact amount. So we've had some conversations about business interruption grants, and that's a lot of work. And I get it, that it's, it would be a first-come, first-served type of award, right? Is that, I'm looking at Lindsay in the back, because she's the one I've been talking about to this the most. My, my question is, we're worried about picking winners and losers. But we're consistently only hearing from a couple of people who are at our heels asking for help. So the people who are needing the help the most are really knocking on our door almost weekly. I mean, we've all received the emails from consistently the same folks who need this help. And are we going to consider helping those people who are asking us the most frequently for a business interruption grant? When is the deadline? So that's, that's kind of my question. Because if we have $620,000 left, what's going to be the cutoff? And where will this money go if we don't use it for businesses? Because I don't want to have $620,000 sitting here with businesses who have been asking us repeatedly for help, and we don't help them.
Let me respond first. We have some, some choices to make. And I think Brent referenced that we close the portal down, but I think that we believe there's capacity in the community that other people would apply for $5,000 mini-grants if we were to reopen the portal. So that's the first consideration that the, that the commission should make. What it would be, after we do the accounting of these 1,372, and get the repeaters out and make sure that we can come back with an exact number of dollars still available, is it the will of the commission then to reopen that portal and accept more applications? So as Brent said, we don't overspend an account and have to tell people no, and allow that to run its course. That'd be the first decision. Or is it a decision from the commission to do something else, else with any leftover money, up to and including what you're recommending, Commissioner? I think that some point, the commission will have to make a decision. Probably realistically, Brent, I'm looking, next week, we'll have a good accountability of this, and we can come back with the exact numbers of what's left, and what the commission's will is to do with that $600,000, $700,000, $800,000, or whatever's left in that pool.
So is there a timeframe in which we need to have a decision made?
Once we've, as Manager Stole says, once we've got the accounting, we can get numbers to you. And because time is definitely of the essence, as we get closer and closer to that deadline, we would want to present something next week for your consideration at that time.
Okay. And I, I know that this is a lot of extra work. I mean, I, I understand there's also risk involved. But to sit here and say that we have, you know, $620,000 left for businesses in our community, I would hate for that money to go back into a pot, or be sent back, or be used for other things when it was originally designed to help businesses, small business, and our community recoup, and remain open. So I'd, I'd like to know as quickly as possible when we're going to make a decision, or when these 1,376, you know, the 1,376 applications are going to be processed. Seems like we've already, I mean, we had 400 and some that already were, were processed. These, this includes the 400 we already did. This is total for the whole program.
Total applications received today, yes.
So do you have an idea when the 1,376 are going to be? One week, two weeks, three weeks? Do we have any clue as to how long that's going to take?
We should have something to you by the end of the week, Monday at the latest. So you'll have numbers before we would talk about it next week.
Okay. So we can make a decision next week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. I don't see anything else. I have, Brent, I have just let you know and others that I've had, for some reason, a handful of people reach out unsolicited to say that they're very appreciative of the PPE kits going by at Interest Arena and picking up. And a couple of them said, I, I got more, I got more kit, I got more supplies than I think I needed, but it's going to be great, I'll wait the time to, to use it. So like, just to comment on the side that...
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll pass that on to the folks at the, that are passing out the kits. It's always good to...
Right, yeah.
Under-promise and over-deliver.
Yeah, very good. Okay, with that, I don't see other comments. I'll make a motion to receive and file Brent's report.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, no other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, next up, I believe, is Lindsay. Thanks again, Brent, for all the hard work, and thanks to the committee for all their hard work, please. All right, Lindsay, we, I think we received an email about this.
You did, indeed.
Right. And so thanks for that advanced email, so appreciate that information. And so you can present or summarize what you were going to ask us.
That sounds great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So for the record, Lindsay Povrissow, CFO. I did, thank you for saying advance notice, although I would tell you, you only got it yesterday afternoon. And it was a 50-page attachment, though most of those pages were quotes. So I do apologize for not getting this to you sooner. We were working it through the process as quickly as possible. So there is some time sensitivity to this request. It is for two interoperable software systems to facilitate the testing, tracking, and reporting of COVID-19 for the Health Department. The electronic health record system is the first component. It will enable coordination of health records between leadership, response teams, mobile field clinics, and testing centers. The second component is a laboratory information system, which will support laboratory operations and is important in collecting, storing, and retrieving COVID-19 data. Together, the systems will streamline the process of scheduling and conducting testing, transmitting results to clients, and managing COVID-19 data. The streamlined process will increase the efficiency of operations, allowing for expedited lab results and client notifications. It is expected that the systems will enable the department to increase the number of clients tested and accelerate follow-up for those who have tested positive. Clients will be able to retrieve lab results through a secure customer portal, reducing the burden on Health Department employees to communicate with them regarding lab results. The systems will ultimately approve, improve the department's ability to provide COVID-19 testing in Sedwick County. As a result, Whit O'Brien has determined that the request is eligible for CARES as long as the systems are actually on operation by December 30th, which of course is the cutoff for CARES. CARES would cover year-one expenses of $248,474. Annual ongoing expenses would be $148,793. Now, in the note I sent you yesterday, I said that we thought that there was a good chance that would come from the general fund. Since then, Adrian has, Adrian Byrne with our Health Department has been able to provide some updated information. And they have identified funding sources, actually grant funding sources, to pay for years two and three. And then, on an ongoing basis, they would be able to generate $50,000 from grant resources to cover that 100, at least partially cover that ongoing $150,000 cost. So no impact to the general fund in the first three years of these operations. In order to meet the 1230 up-and-running CARES deadline, the vendors have said that they would need to know that we are committed to this. One system needs to know by this Friday, the other needs to know by the following Friday. And so that's why I've said there is some time sensitivity to this, and why we've been pushing it through the process, and why we've pushed it to you without giving you as much notice. It is important to have this. I would remind you, the Health Department has put in an order for their own testing machines. And so even though some of our vendors may have some opportunities for us to use their software systems, this would enable us to have our own software systems to go along with our own testing equipment. So with that, I'm happy to try and answer any questions, or pick on maybe Tim Kaufman to come up and help if necessary. And if not, I recommend you approve the acquisition.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz has a comment?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I just mainly have a question around, you said there would be an online portal where folks could go in and get their results. Will they receive some sort of notification via text to, I mean, or will, or will they just have to go check at a certain time?
Good morning, Commissioners, Tim Kaufman. We believe that the, the lab information system will notify individuals when those results are available. And that's pretty standard with commercial softwares that do this type of work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't see other comments or questions. I'll make a motion to approve the funding request as presented from Lindsay.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the funding request. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Lindsay. So place the order. Okay.
We will let them know. They will be very excited. Thank you.
Next, next up is your report.
Indeed, it is your weekly COVID spending status update. So yes, I'm going to move quick so I don't put you to sleep. Thanks for that, though. So we are, this week, up to a total spending amount on COVID. This includes all funding sources, of $27,746,490. In our non-CARES funding sources, we are up just a bit in the general fund to $1,357,886 because payroll posted last week. We do have some positions that are being funded through this source. In the FIRE general fund, we are up to $22,666. That is up $829, actually, for payroll. The FIRE district has assigned an employee to help with the N95 mask fit testing exercise. And so that individual's hours are being charged to this funding source. Hopefully, we will be able to reimburse that with CARES funding after an eligibility analysis by our Whit O'Brien's consultants. So then, shifting to CARES, the county's direct allocation, we have spent $22,68,624. That is up $177,416 from last week. Of that, $118,000 is for personnel, again, because we had a payroll posting. That, 118,000 does include 32,000 for our Family First Coronavirus Relief Act, emergency paid sick leave, and expanded family medical leave. So that is actually down a bit from where we have been. We had been around 40,000 per pay period, and so that means that usage was down a bit in the last pay period. That 177,000 increase also includes 39,000 for technology, including 10,000 for charging lockers at Corrections, and the usual supplies that we talk with you about each week. We've spent about $8,000 for face masks, $5,000 for soap and hand sanitizer, and then $7,000 for additional cloth and linen at the jail, so that they can try and have enhanced hygiene practices there. So then, shifting to our external type of funding, we have spent $8,463,552 in support to schools and cities. That is no change from last week. I will tell you that we have been in communication with all of the schools and cities that you did authorize the additional funding for. All schools have responded back that they would like the funding. Almost all of the cities have. We have two that have not responded yet, but their deadline is today. And we will get amendments out to them this week, so that this, again, the schools will get 100% of their funding. The cities will have access to that funding through the review team as they submit reimbursable expenses. So that amendment also will give them a little more time. We had had a incurred-by October 30th date in the original agreement. This agreement will extend it to, say, spent by November 30th, to give them some time. Yes, sir.
Regarding the schools, is that a per-school refund, or a per, per-school district?
So the 1.5 million increase was for all schools. And so then it's on a per-capita basis. I think it's about $16 per kid, and I can get you the list for precisely what that was.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Good day.
Okay. So we, that is the summary of the spending of our direct CARES allocation. And so that means that as of right now, we have $77,568,293 remaining. Now, if we shift to our SPARC spending, again, the state gave us 9.3 million related to our high unemployment earlier this year. And so that funding has been dedicated to business. The commission also allocated additional funds in your September 23rd spending plan. So this does not include that additional funding. That additional funding would be picked up on the county's side. So of that 9.3 million that we received, we have spent $3,923,792. The bulk of that is for 202 Safe Operating Grants, which Brent was sharing the dollar figure with, with you before. And then we have spent $2,927,541 of that funding for PPE kits. And as he said, the remaining funding in that bucket was for the workforce development applications, and those agreements are in process now, and are actually backed to us for signature for two of those three. So then, shifting to CARES HAVA funds, so again, Help America Vote Act, that is funding that the Secretary of State's office received related to elections. Sedwick County's allocation was about 420,000 of that. $315,514 has been spent. That is up about $74,000 from what I reported to you last week. And the bulk of that has been spent on postage and, or I'm sorry, not postage printing, for ballots, and mailers, and reply envelopes. About 90,000 of those. And then, though not CARES, I know that, because we are talking about elections, I wanted to give you an update that the Center for Tech and Civic Life grant, of that, $459,758 has been allocated, or has already been authorized for spending, including 100 voting machines, 685 bar scanners, and some associated installation and accessories. So with that, that completes my report. I'm happy to... I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I recommend you receive and file.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsey, for that, for that summary. So, I don't see any questions at this point. So, I'll make a motion to receive and file your report.
Second.
Then, a motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. Thank you, Lindsey.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Before we go on to the next item on the agenda, I do have a, a motion, I'd like to make an off-agenda item to discuss Dr. Menz's new health order, and possibly consider a resolution to make minor amendments to that order.
Okay, there's a motion for an off-agenda item. Motion and a second for off-agenda item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I understand Dr. Menz did issue a, a revised health order, I guess this morning, that, that exempts, if you will, kindergarten, kindergarten students from the mask order, even if they're not five years of age or under, they, it would be exempt from having to wear a mask, if I understand that correctly. Is that, is that correct? I don't know if Justin Wagner's in the room or not, but he'd probably be the right one to ask that question, too.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. To, with regard to Commissioner Howell's question, yes, the answer is that Dr. Menz, late yesterday, did issue a, what I would refer to as cosmetic changes to his order that was issued on the 16th. The, probably the only substantive change to that was that it clarified that kids who are in school and that are in a kindergarten class at the school's option would not necessarily, they could be exempted from the mask requirement. Any of the other changes were typos, or maybe reduce, taking out some redundant language, that kind of information. But there was a slightly revised order that was issued late yesterday by Dr. Menz.
All right, well, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate that. I, I appreciate Dr. Menz giving us advanced notice of this order, and I have read it very, very carefully. I did find some things that I think were, were just English errors and typos. And Justin, you and I talked about that prior to now. In fact, we worked on, I worked on a, a revision of this with your assistance, and I, and I had you send that out to the Commissioners yesterday for them to review some suggested changes. A couple of things I would point out, I guess, on the order that I think need to have a little bit of, I guess, some, some discussion and possibly some change. First thing I would notice is that we do, I am aware that Douglas County has a lawsuit that's going on, ongoing, regarding their health order. I know our, our order is not the same as their order, but one thing that's different in Dr. Menz's order this time is, is changing the, the curfew or the closing hours of these certain businesses, these drinking establishments, to 1:00 a.m. I, I would just note that if we didn't do this at all, and if we simply backed off this issue entirely, these businesses would have to close at 2:00 a.m. If I understand correctly, someone else can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they have, actually have to have the doors closed and locked essentially at 2:00 a.m. So, they don't necessarily serve drinks and have people in there till 2:00, and then they start closing down. They actually have to be closed at 2:00 a.m. So, I, I don't know if that's the way this is interpreted at 1:00, but I would just say, in light of the Douglas County lawsuit that is based on a Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution argument, I, I would rather, if I couldn't, if I could influence the decision of this, influence this health orders a little bit, I would simply say, we've, we've evolved from 11:00 to midnight, now to 1:00. And I would argue that, I, I would assume that they're busier at 12:35, 12:30, 12:45. They're busier at that time than they would be at 1:15 or 1:30. And so, I don't quite understand the health order at this point with regards to trying to regulate these businesses to close at 1:00 a.m. I think that if we're gonna concede to 1:00 a.m., we might as well just concede back to state law. And I think this would get us out of a potential lawsuit. And in light of what's going on in Douglas County, I would rather take the position that the Fourteenth Amendment does speak to me. We ought to, we really ought to be careful not to deprive these people of life, liberty, and property without due process. And I think that we, right, right now, I've heard from many of these business owners that saying, that say that they do things correctly, and they should not be punished because of other similar businesses that maybe are not doing it correctly. And I think that that's the issue of due process. If we wanted to focus on the bad players with an injunction, that would be another way to handle that. But there's an assumption in this order that there's gonna be a total disregard for the health order. And if that's the case, we have, we have authority to do an injunction on these businesses that are the bad players. And so, I would rather approach this, that direction rather than a broad brush that treats all of these businesses like they're bad players, and deprives them of life, liberty, and property with regards to the Fourteenth Amendment. And by the way, I'll, I will argue there are other amendments that have a very, very similar argument. And so, trying to just protect these businesses and treat them fairly, I would like to see us just eliminate these references in the, in the order. Let me go through just a couple of other items real quickly, and I'll, let me get through all my comments real quickly, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman, and then I'll, I'll stop and see what other people say.
Okay.
I would just tell you, if you look at section, section one of the order, which is on, on the, on the order, it's, starts out, section one, wearing of masks, other face coverings. The original language references indoor and outdoor, and I find that to be needless. Every place we can be is probably, is, is gonna be indoors or outdoor. But it also says that, that we should wear face coverings if we're inside any indoor or outdoor public space. I think that, that is unnecessarily, just, it's just not written very well. And I think that if, to reword that, I, I suggested some language that says that, here's the way I would say it. Any person within Sedgwick County should cover their mouth and nose with a mask or other face covering when they are in, in any public space, or distancing of six feet at all times is not possible, not including individuals who reside together. And if you look at the very, the other three items listed under section, section 1.1, it covers every other situation. But let me give you some reasons why I think that my language is better.
Commissioner, can I ask a question? I think that's addressed in this revised order that he just put out.
Okay, let me take a look here.
If you look at it.
Okay. You bring it up on my screen, so I can see it. Apologize.
Kate, hey, Kate, did you hand us, it doesn't say which order this is. Is this Dr. Menz's order, or is this the revision that Jim Howell, that Commissioner Howell wants?
This is, this is the Dr. Menz's order that cleaned up some of the information that Justin referred to earlier on typographical errors. The, the only, the only significant change is the kindergarten thing and the, and...
Yes, Chairman, Justin Wagner. Again, if I might, Commissioner Cruz, to your question, also, if you'd like, I do have printed copies of the track changes from Dr. Menz's October 16th order to his order from yesterday. Would you like me to pass those out?
Justin, I think you read my mind. That's exactly what I want.
I'll go ahead and do that. I'll be up there in just a second. Pass it, son.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the revised order, but it does say, for example, that if someone is in line waiting to enter a public space, even if there's no one else around them, they have to wear a mask. And I, again, I think that that is unnecessary language. I don't, the, the spirit of this law is, if you're around other people, you should wear a mask. If you're not around other people, you don't need to wear a mask. And I, I think this provides, if you will, in Dr. Menz's order, requirements to wear a mask, for example, if you are waiting in line to enter a public space. And I don't think that's necessary. So, I, I guess my point would be, is that, as I've worded, I guess, my recommended language, it covers every other situation in all of those points. It doesn't need to be broken down into details. For example, it says, obtaining services from healthcare sector and settings, including but not limited to hospitals, pharmacies, medical clinics, laboratories, physician, dental office. It, it goes without saying that if you're around other people, you wear a mask. If you're not around other people, you don't need to wear a mask. And I don't know why we need to list, in fact, I would argue, by even listing this, it's not obviously an exhaustive list, but it would imply then, if it's not listed, that it's not required. I don't, I don't think we need to go there at all. So, anyway, I did, I did provide some recommended language there. You're welcome to look at that. You have a copy of that. If you don't mind, I'd like to go on a couple of other little things there that I, I think are, are reasons why I'm bringing this up today. Dr. Menz, I think, added about nine whereas statements in the, in the front material of this health order. But if we were going to simply go back to state law, those whereas statements don't really serve a purpose, and I would recommend we delete those. I would say, with respect to the drinking establishments, once again, for the record, I don't, I don't frequent these places. In fact, I don't drink alcohol at all. But having said that, I think it's wrong that we would think that somehow we're reducing transmission of COVID-19 in Sedgwick County by keeping these places open till 1:00 a.m. And then, we allow, if you will, these, these places to serve alcohol outside of their, outside of their facility to people outside, up until, I guess, 2:00 in the morning. And to me, that's, that's, it's not as good as the state law itself. The state law is written to protect the, the public from, from public drinking and that type of thing. I think that the state law as written is a better, is a better policy. I don't think we need to be embracing people buying margaritas at 2:00 in the morning out, outside, possibly even in their own car. So, I would rather simply eliminate that language entirely from this order. I talked to Doc, I talked to Commissioner Dennis yesterday a little bit, and, and he said that he would be willing to change the age up through first grade. And so, I appreciate Dr. Menz's change to this. That has it laced to kindergartners, but I would like to see it changed to first grade or age six, whichever is greater. So, if someone is in the first grade, regardless of their age, they would be exempt. That's a change that I have suggested in my, in my health order changes. And then, finally, on the, on the last part of this, under section two, there's a lot of references to the state's executive order. That, my opinion is, we shouldn't have to go to the state's executive order to, to find out that information. They should simply just codify that information in this order. It's much cleaner and simpler and easier to understand. And so, I brought those elements into this order rather than leaving them as a reference with edits, as it was given to us through Dr. Menz. So, those are my, my suggested changes, and I'll sit back and listen to the discussion. But if, I guess, I'll be willing to make a motion at some point, but let me just see what you'll have to say about it. Thank you, thank you for the chance to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Papoon, is there...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one comment. I would caution the commission from putting too much weight into this lawsuit in Douglas County. Douglas County is vigorously fighting this, and a number of people, citizens and other people that talk about this case, it's like they've lost already, and that we're, we're violating somebody's due process. That case has not been decided. It's in federal court. Let's wait and see what the outcome of that case is before we start overreacting to it. The other thing I might mention is, I think this board needs to fundamentally decide if this is Dr. Menz's order or the board's order. We'll be happy to distribute, if this board wants to modify the, the order and take ownership of the order, we'll be happy to distribute a word, editable version of this order, and we'll get everybody's feedback and comments, and be happy to work through that process. But up to now, Mr. Wagner's just been working pretty much directly with Dr. Menz, and this is the order that's before you today that we, that Justin provided you with. So, those are my only comments at this point.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. I do, I think a lot of these statements that Commissioner Howell had are valid and, and need addressed. Maybe we could form a letter and send it to Dr. Menz to ask him when he thinks we could get something going with the 2:00 a.m. curfew coming back. Because I think we've all heard from a lot of bar and restaurant owners that have these concerns, so that'd be one thing to address. The other thing to address would be capacity levels. So, Justin, are, for, for the restaurants and everything, are they still at 50% capacity? Because I do think there's confusion that some restaurants are operating pretty much at full capacity, and others are still at 50%.
Again, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner O'Donnell, there is a, a 50% capacity requirement that applies to bars, nightclubs, and then restaurants that are allowed to serve alcohol on-site, or other businesses that serve alcohol on-site. You know, and so, they're, they're set to the 50% capacity requirements, yes.
Right. So, my, I guess my question then for Dr. Menz would be, when does he anticipate relaxing some of those, even if we went to 75% capacity and then getting back to 100%? Because our question that we've continually had throughout this entire debate is, what's the exit ramp? You know, how, at what point do we move into the next phase in letting businesses operate? How they see fit while taking the risk on, and making sure their customers and their employees are safe? So, those are the questions. I know Commissioner Howell brought them up, but, but I'd be interested in finding out from Dr. Menz what the next step is. I am very happy, actually, that he did agree and see the value in, in going to the 1:00 a.m. curfew. That absolutely helps. I think all of us probably spoke to a bar or restaurant owner after we moved it to midnight, and they were delighted. They, they, they said it helped them out tremendously. So, I think this 1:00 a.m. is going to help them out a lot as well. So, these are the questions as we move forward. How do we, how do we reopen our economy in a safe, responsible way?
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, I appreciate that Dr. Menz is hearing what the businesses are saying about the bars and restaurants on keeping them open later. We were way up at 11:00 at one point in time, moved it back to midnight. I think it's a prudent move to move, move it back to 1:00 a.m., and we'd need to find out what happens at that point. The other thing I appreciate that Dr. Menz did was, I've been always concerned about kindergarten classes, because we set this age at five years old. And with it set there, we could have students in a kindergarten class, some had to wear a mask and some didn't have to wear a mask. And this kind of clarifies it so that they don't have to wear a mask in kindergarten, and it's up to the school district, of course. But I, this was something that I thought was very confusing for the, the schools. I, I would like a little bit further study to see if, if we need to look at the first grade. I did talk to Commissioner Howell about that yesterday when he called me. And that's something that we can take a look at in the future. And I think it does have some merit, but I appreciate Dr. Menz hearing that there's some differences in kindergarten that, that needed to be addressed. Some of the other things that Dr. Menz put in the revised order that did clean up some of the areas that Commissioner Howell was concerned with, so I appreciate that also. Well, I am happy with the revised order that came out last night from Dr. Menz. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Also, hey, Justin, maybe you or Tom back from your police days, related to the 50% occupancy, in the middle of that paragraph, it references the capacity under the applicable fire code. And regardless of COVID or occupancy, it's, it's always been the, the fire department would go to a place and say, hey, you're, you had a, here's your 100% capacity, and you're sitting at 120. And they even issue a warning. Is it the fire department that does that traditionally?
It is, sir. And let's back up from the, when, when a building opens and a business opens, it is the fire department that sets that capacity based on an algorithm of square footage and other factors. And then, the enforcement of that moving forward is with the fire department.
Is the fire marshal, yeah. When somebody says, hey, the fire marshal came in and, so they could even, and whatever their policy is, they can, they can warn them, or they can issue a warning, or they can even close them down, I guess, right?
Yeah, correct. Even back in the day, when we would go and have a... Even back in the day, when we would go and have a nightclub or a business that was overcrowded as police, we would call in the fire marshal. They would actually perform -- we would assist them, and they would perform the countout. And you're right, there's discretion there. You cite, close down, or you would warn. There's discretion in that process.
So in expansion of, as Commissioner O'Donnell's questioned about expanding the 50% to something greater than 50% capacity, it's still under the rules of fire code and fire marshal enforcement if there's a violator? I just wanted to kind of help clarify that. Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Tom, could you kind of briefly explain to us the hospital call from Monday?
Okay. We had our weekly call with Via Christi and Wesley and the VA on Monday, and the numbers have been -- the numbers that they went over during the meeting were posted to the dashboard late on Monday. Essentially, the numbers are very similar to the last two or three, four weeks. They have 68 patients. We've been right around that upper 60 mark, a little bit less than 70 mark for several weeks now. ICU numbers actually went down just a tad bit compared to last week. But the takeaway, and Commissioner Howell was on that call with me, he can also comment, but the takeaway for me on that call was that we're seeing patient, the clientele within the hospitals, transition away from Sedgwick County residents to more out-of-county and even out-of-state patients. Wesley has patients from Oklahoma and Texas in the hospital. And Ascension, though they did not have exact numbers during the Monday call, indicated a similar type of pattern that they are seeing. They reiterated what they had done the week -- what they had talked about the week before, that their staff is -- and we've mentioned a couple of times in this meeting, this new term, COVID fatigue. Their staff is very tired. Wesley mentioned they had many staff on quarantine, not from hospital operations, but from just living life in the community, and it's a community-spread virus, clearly. But they take quarantine very seriously. They can't have hospital staff in a hospital who are at risk of, you know, coming down with COVID. So they had 20 staff that were on quarantine. Ascension indicated a similar phenomenon, that like all of us who are major employers, you lose staff on quarantine. So they had some concerns about that operationally that impacts them to some degree. So they're clearly concerned. They're clearly concerned going into a flu season. They're clearly concerned with the COVID numbers going the direction they are. So that was my memory, ma'am, of the call on Monday.
Well, I just -- I'm concerned that if we're receiving out-of-county, like way out-of-county, out-of-state, we've received patients from Tulsa, Oklahoma. So Oklahoma has an article from Tulsa World says that they have imposed minimally evasive restrictions. So they don't have a lot of restrictions in Tulsa. And I wonder if that is something we can look into as to where we're receiving patients and what the restrictions are, so that if we lax restrictions, what would happen? I get it that people are fatigued. I think we all are. I especially can attest to that. I wasn't on the call. I had a family emergency this weekend, so I was following up with that on Monday. Some of the headlines from around Texas and Oklahoma simply state that what's happening there is lack of restrictions, and that's why their hospitals are filling up. So I want to give props to the residents of Sedgwick County. I feel like we are doing a good job, which is why our hospitals aren't full right now. But what happens when things do start to relax? So that's just a point that I'd like to make. I am kind of concerned with the school-aged children in masks. I don't necessarily want to impose any mask restrictions on children in schools, but how do we determine if you have a -- for example, I have a niece and nephew who go to the same school. One is in kindergarten and one is in second grade. So if one is not wearing a mask and the other one is, how is that handled in family dynamics? And then additionally, in the schools, if you have one group of kids walking down the hallway that aren't wearing masks, and you have all the rest of the school that is wearing masks, how is that handled with the children in schools? So that's a question I'd really like to ask, and I'd like to know -- I'd like to ask that from Dr. Minz. I do plan to reach out to a few other physicians, but I think that's an important question. And I wonder, you know, what his, you know, he says to not have it with kindergartners. Is it simply because they're having a tough time wearing them? Yes, Mike?
Commissioner Cruz, in response to a couple of your questions here, and I think Dr. Minz is out of town, if I'm not mistaken, and I think we can get him here in a future meeting, and that was part of the problem with not, you know, having him here present today. I think some of the considerations on -- first of all, it's up to the schools to manage. We've allowed that exception here. But part of it was there are kindergartners that are five-year-olds and six-year-olds. So you have both of these kids sitting in a class, one required to wear a mask, one not required to wear a mask. And that was kind of the thinking for doing that. But we will certainly get Dr. Minz here, so you can ask him the questions that you have.
I mean, just as a child in school, if you see one kid -- I mean, I feel like we're going to create the same issue with different grade levels because they're not -- I mean, they do see each other in schools. So I feel like that's something to be considered. That's all my comments. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. I don't see any other questions.
I have some other comments I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So with respect to what Mr. Papun stated earlier, I would say that I think there are numerous constitutional arguments with singling out a particular business. Again, they've not had due process. There's an assumption that they're a bad player. I know there are some businesses that are better than others, and I think we should treat them individually rather than with a broad brush. I think in light of the fact that we take an oath to uphold the Constitution and understanding these are natural rights that should not be violated, that they should be protected and defended by us, I have real concern with singling out these particular businesses. And to Commissioner O'Donnell's point, in the draft-proposed changes that I made for y'all, that I edited and provided to you yesterday, it takes up the 50% occupancy issue entirely. It treats every business exactly the same. And so I think that's the right move, and I would suggest we simply just eliminate the special handling, go back to state law with respect to all businesses. And I do think that we ought to receive recommendations from Dr. Minz, and we as the Board of Health should discuss those and develop the health order as we believe it should be issued. And it should be issued from the Board of Health, the county commissioners, rather than from Dr. Minz. And so I do agree with Mr. Papun that that would be the better process. And so every time he's done this, I've tried to bring it back to the commission for us to discuss and to affirm and to change or to consider at least. And so I think that's the -- the people understand that we are the elected officials, and I think it's right that we are the ones that issue the order at the end of the day. And I've done that intentionally because of that argument. And to Commissioner Cruz, I agree. It is hard to have one student walking down the hall that's not wearing a mask because they have an exemption in the order. By the way, Dr. Minz also does concede that schools' consent policies are more restrictive than the health order. So again, we would have the right to do this, but to the extent that we're not going to mandate masks, the schools would still have the opportunity to create local policy that either allows or mandates, if you will, these kindergartners to wear masks. But to your point, Commissioner Cruz, I argued for this a while back that we should exempt elementary schools entirely. I use the age 11. What I really intended by that was if you're an elementary school student, then I don't think that Sedgwick County ought to be mandating the issue. We should let schools develop their own local policies. And whether they want to exempt all students or any students or some of the students, that would be their choice. And then let me just say again, I believe that everything in Section 1, it relates individuals and talks about businesses and organizations and has all these situations laid out that are very specific. And I think that all of that is very unnecessary. The only thing that needs to be stated, frankly, is that if you're around people, you should wear a mask, and if you're not around people, you don't need to wear a mask. And that's essentially what I proposed in my updated language. It's extremely simple. My suggested changes also codifies the elements out of the state's executive order that we still retain as part of the health order of Sedgwick County. It brings those elements in and lists them specifically. And so with that, I think we ought to, you know, I know that it probably won't pass, but I'd like to make a motion that we would approve the resolution that was prepared by Jeff Wagner that would amend the Sedgwick County health order. I don't know what else I need to say, but that's what I would like to make a motion for that.
Is that?
As I've described, and as you have a copy of in front of you.
Is that the one that we received about 5:30 last night?
Yes, sir.
And so this, according to Justin, I don't have the email in front of me, but you sent it to us about 5:30 and said that this was an order that was authored by -- am I using the word -- authored by Commissioner Howell?
Justin Wagner, again, Assistant County Counselor and Chairman, that's correct. I think it was a little before 5:30 because I think it left before then. But I think it was close, it was late in the day, is what I would refer to it as. I do happen to have a copy of that draft resolution, hard copies with me, if you would like to see them. I know each of you got it by email, and it would attach the red line changes that were primarily drafted, authored by Commissioner Howell. I had input in terms of, you know, changing some of the form requirements or legality requirements in terms of making it -- the changes he was proposing make sense in the scheme of the full order that Dr. Minz had issued and amending it. But the changes I think Commissioner Howell described were made by him.
Okay. I was able to print it off this morning with the red lines. I mean, it had some significant deletions, for sure, and some word changes in there. I haven't had a chance to go through line by line. But so that's your motion, Commissioner Howell, is to approve the --
Yeah, yes, sir. I would highlight one other distinction on Section 1.2. Again, it eliminates all of the various examples. There's a long list, a long litany of all kinds of examples when masks must be worn. And I would give you an example here. It kind of even makes the point that if you're working by yourself, you're not with any other people, and you still have to wear a mask. There's only one situation that I would adamantly support, a time when a mask, wearing a mask should be nondiscretionary, should be absolutely required, and that's if someone's preparing food. And so I left that language in there. It says, "Employees who are working in any space where food is prepared or packaged for sale or distribution to others, they must wear," it says, "to wear a mask or other face covering." But before that, it says they must. And I would support that. That does still make sense to me, and I think we should say it plainly, because I'm sure everyone has been out to places and watched someone prepare their food, and they're not wearing a mask properly. So I think we need to keep that language in the order. But other than that, it simplifies down the intent of the orders, that if you're around other people, you should wear a mask. If you're not around other people, you don't need to wear a mask. Social distancing is better. It also retains the idea that having physical barriers between people is a suitable substitute for social distancing or wearing a mask. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would move my motion to adopt the resolution that would amend the health order as I've described.
Okay. And to clarify, so this is the -- your motion is to adopt this order that -- clearly, you know it very well because you helped write it and looked at it. You knew every word. This order that we all received at about 5:30 last night, that's your motion?
Correct. There's a resolution, we need to adopt the resolution, and the resolution then references the changes that are on the next five pages.
Okay.
So we take a seven-page order from Dr. Minz, reduce it by two pages, now it's five pages long, and there's a two-page resolution that we would need to adopt, to adopt those changes to the health order.
Okay. I'm just clarifying your motion.
Chairman --
Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor, again. And I may have missed this. Commissioner Howell may have said it when I think I was handing out some of the hard copies of this. I think a key change that you would want to be aware of in this draft, because there are a lot of proposed changes, would be that it would change the mask, the requirement to wear a mask when you're within six feet of people. I'm generalizing and stating much more specifically than that. It would change it to a should, so it would no longer be mandatory. And so I did want to point that out. He may have said that, and I may have missed it. But I hadn't heard him mention that specifically, so I wanted to point that out.
Right. I see.
Just for clarity, I have said the word "should" every time I've referenced this. And I would point out that there's no enforcement provisions in the order. We can say "shall" all we want to, but if we don't have enforcement, there really what we're saying is, when people are around other people, they should wear a mask, and if they're not around other people, they don't need to wear a mask. And so basically, I think it's more accurate to use the word "should." It is about education. It's about us advocating for the wearing of masks. And if someone chooses not to wear a mask, there's really nothing in the order, even as Dr. Minz issued his order, there's nothing in that order that would actually enforce the word "shall." So I think the word "should" is the correct word.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So the -- Dr. Minz is out of town, is that what you said?
I can't recall right now if he said he was out of town or unavailable this morning. I apologize if I -- I can't remember for sure what he said, but he was not going to be able to finalize the order that I discussed with him yesterday afternoon this morning, and he finalized it yesterday.
Well, I don't think that it's good practice to change an order without having Dr. Minz here to talk about it with us. He is our health professional. He consults with many other health professionals, and I feel like that would be good practice to ensure that we had a health professional here, an expert in the field, to discuss this important order with us here today. And that is why I won't be supporting this motion, because we don't have him here to address these questions.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I wanted you to know that Dr. Minz did receive a copy of this as well, same time that you all did.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. What I would like to do is, I'll second this because I want to do a substitute motion that we do send this to Dr. Minz, because I would like an answer back on some of these questions that we had about closing times, about, like Commissioner Howell said, he took out the whole 50% capacity issue. These are the questions that I want answered from Dr. Minz. So I'll second it and then offer a substitute motion. Is that the correct way to do it? That's what I thought. Yeah. So what I'd like to do is offer a substitute motion that we send this order to Dr. Minz and get a response and his suggestions on this order and maybe some guidelines and some -- what?
You're saying you're going to send the 5:30 -- your motion is to send the 5:30 motion that --
To Dr. Minz.
To Dr. Minz.
To get an official response from him.
A response, okay.
And his thoughts on this. Before we -- before I'm comfortable with endorsing this, I would like to get Dr. Minz's response to it, and that would give all of us time to review it as well, since, as Commissioner Meister said, we didn't get it until 5:30. But I do appreciate all the work that Commissioner Howell put into it, and I'm really not trying to discount it. But since Dr. Minz isn't here, I would like to get his response as well on how we move forward, because I agree with many of Commissioner Howell's suggestions.
Okay. There's a motion to send this, or a substitute motion to send this resolution to Dr. Minz for comment, for his opinion and comment, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Well, since Commissioner O'Donnell seconded the first motion and I wasn't going to support the first motion, we're going to have to move forward with some kind of substitute motion to take some kind of action. So I'll second the substitute motion.
Okay. There's a motion and a -- I mean, yeah, there's a motion and a second on the substitute There's a motion and a, I mean, yeah, there's a motion and a second on the substitute motion to send this order to Dr. Minz for comments and consideration?
Can I just? I have a comment or question, then, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz first, and then you, Commissioner Howell?
So, Mr. Papun, can you clarify to us, Dr. Minz, the current order, the revision that was released, was that yesterday, Justin?
That's correct.
The revision of his order is currently in place?
Yes, yes.
So regardless of what we did here, sending this to him does not replace that order?
No, it doesn't. It just gives him the opportunity to respond to some of the concerns raised by Commissioner Howell.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner Howell?
Yes, so just a point of, again, another point of clarification, so I appreciate the question from Commissioner Cruz. I had a similar question that, just so everyone understands, we did receive an amendment to that order yesterday and another amendment to that order just this morning. So again, we're getting information very late, right before the meeting, right before the meeting, I received yet another revision to Dr. Minz's order with some of the changes that were referenced in the discussion we already had. Having said that, if this motion, the substitute motion passes, I want everyone to agree or at least understand, I guess, that Dr. Minz's order will take effect at midnight, or she's at 12:01 this morning, or tomorrow morning, as written. So Dr. Minz's order will be, become the law of Central County, and again, there will be no commission vote to make that happen. In other words, if Dr. Minz has the authority, and that order will go into place with Dr. Minz's authority only.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
The motion is to send this there to Dr. Minz. That's the motion.
I understand that, and my point would be that in absence of us voting for something today, in terms of a health order, then Dr. Minz's order goes into effect at 12:01 tomorrow morning without a commission vote.
Dr. Minz's order goes in effect at 12:01 tomorrow morning, correct. Commissioner Cruz has a question?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to kind of clarify what Commissioner Howell just said, we received minimal changes to this that were clearly outlined from Justin Wagner. We did receive an email from Justin at 8:42 a.m. that just gives us the track versions of what had changed from the order he sent at 4:57 and then the one he sent at 5:09. So these changes weren't eliminating two full pages of the order, they were slight changes that were quite easy to understand rather than eliminating a lot. So I just, I want to make sure that we're clear on exactly the documents that we were given in comparison to a completely changed order that eliminates a lot of language. Thank you for that ability to explain.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. And so my last comment would be, when we met, I think it was three or four weeks ago now, when I made the recommendation, Commissioner Cruz seconded it, that we would go to midnight, what we did is we sent that to Dr. Minz to get his response. That's exactly what I'm trying to do today, to get his response to this. I'm not, I think we're keeping now that precedent of this is Dr. Minz's order, let's get his feedback on this. And if he was here today, I think he'd be able to answer all these questions immediately. So what I would like to do with this motion that Commissioner Dennis seconded is, we'll wait to hear back. I'll make sure that the manager and Tim Kaufman probably speaks to Dr. Minz the most, is just tell him that the commission would like a response at as early as convenience. I'm not going to mandate it with my motion win, because I don't know when he's back in town.
I would agree.
But that's what this whole issue is, is it is Dr. Minz's order, but he does, from what I understand, appreciate the input from the commission, and I think we've been very respectful of his role, and I think he's been respectful of our role, even when we disagree. I think we've had respectful conversations, and I know Commissioner Meister talked to him, I think, earlier this week or sometime last week, and had a very good conversation based on the feedback I heard. So this is just in keeping with that. So that's why I had my motion, and I appreciate Commissioner Dennis for seconding that. So thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
I'll be glad to support the substitute motion, but I would like to make a motion then, after this, that we would affirm Dr. Minz's order so that the commissioners are on record. So after this motion is voted upon, I would like to make another motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to send this resolution to Dr. Minz for comments. I don't see any other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we would affirm Dr. Minz's health order.
Okay, there's a motion.
And for the record, to be clear, I plan on voting against it. Thank you.
There's a motion by Commissioner Howell to affirm the current order and noted that he will be voting against it. Is there a second? Is there a second? I don't see a second, so the motion fails due to lack of a second.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Tom, Mr. Manager.
Good morning again. Chairman of Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items J through M this morning.
Okay, Commissioner, you have consent items J through M. Is there any one, any comments or any questions? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to approve consent items J through M.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, no other comment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Okay, thank you, consent passes. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Legislative issues. Mr. Papun or Mr. Akeem?
Thank you, sir. Akeem Ashford, Communications Director.
I'll call you Mr. Ashford, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I appreciate it, sir. Just to give you an update, so yesterday we spoke a little bit on the legislative agenda. I've tagged along with Mike and County Manager, Tom Stoles. I'm going to join you guys the rest of the week, your meetings, your weekly meetings with them, to kind of go over individually, as you asked, Chairman of Items. So we hope to kind of get those finalized. I've also sent emails to some of our department heads who have some asks on the platform as well, so they can also join us at the next couple of meetings here in the next couple of weeks that said that they would. So that's kind of where we are at this point. Not sure if Mr. Papun has anything else to add.
Only that our, the county's lobbyist, Jason Watkins, is also participating in these meetings as well to help us formulate the platform for 2021.
Okay. Any questions? I think that's a good plan, looking forward, I'm sure we're all looking forward to sharing our comments.
Yes, sir.
During these meetings.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the update. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
Other. Does the commission, any of the commissioners have anything other? Okay, I just want to remind the public, what is the date for dropping off all that stuff? The stuff date, is there a drop-off thing going on at, out at the NCAT facility?
Saturday.
I'm sorry?
Saturday.
It's this Saturday from?
9:01.
From 9:01. I know you announced the beginning of the meeting, but I thought it'd be worth reminding. Okay, oh, and Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I just want to re-remind everyone, if you are struggling with mental health during this pandemic, and please reach out to someone at Calm Care, please reach out to me personally, please reach out, there is help available. I just want to reiterate, the National Suicide Prevention Hotline number is 1-800-273-TALK. There is also a really great resource, iChuStotalk.org. So if you are considering suicide, if you know someone who is, please be sure to utilize those resources. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any of us, nobody else has anything other? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item?
Executive session.
Executive session. Yes.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 12:12 for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real estate for the purpose of potentially relocating county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to a live broadcast from executive session at 12:12.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to go into executive session. I don't see other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Okay, we will go to executive session, and we will return shortly after noon. Okay, we will go to executive session, and we will return shortly after noon.
Commissioner, how can you hear us?
I can. Thank you.
Okay. We're on. We're back. Okay. We have returned from executive session. No action taken, no action needed. Does anybody else -- any of the commissioners have any other comments or any other before the board? Being done, we will stand adjourned.